Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We'll call the meeting to order at 5:33. I see on Jim Applegate and Jason Benson are all here. So they're here. So we do the pledge of allegiance. And it's behind us. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
In the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I think there's just a personnel matter that I just want to make the board aware of.
Okay.
And we can do that under executive session.
Okay, so add that to exec session. Jigs, Megan or Jason, any adjustments?
Not I.
I'll be leaving early tonight because I'll probably be getting up around 2:00 in the morning tomorrow to go out in salt and sand.
Yep.
I'm good, Priscilla.
Okay, all right. I do have letters that we'll read under communications, but let's do communications and public comment. We'll start with R H R Smith's presentation.
Ron, Miranda, you guys are up.
Hey, Miranda, you ready?
Yes, do we have the ability to share my screen?
Um, yeah, I think I can do that. Hang on one second. You should have that ability right now. Or shortly.
Is everybody able to see that?
Yeah, you're a little faint though, just in.
Yeah, your voice is a little speakerish.
Okay.
Much better.
Much better, okay. I'll try speaking up. We have sent the short report for Rockingham audit. Friday. We hope it was sent out to everybody.
Andy, I'm getting a lot of background feed from my end here.
What the short report is, is we've pulled out some key financial statements from the big audit report that most people like to look at, and it provides most of the information that we present. So to begin with, we start with Statement C, which is the balance sheet for our governmental funds. The general fund is this first column. And what most people want to know is what their fund balance is. So for the general fund for Rockingham, you finished the year with just north of $2.2 million. Of this $2.2 million, $271,000 has already been committed. $100,000 was for fund balance for FY23 to reduce taxes. And $171,688 was for the FY22 budget to reduce taxes. Those were both voted on in previous town meetings, elections, which left the remaining $2 million, which leaves the remaining $2 million that can be used as you, as you vote on and as you present to your voters. The next column is your capital reserve fund of $620,000. And then the last, this next column is other governmental funds. This will include special revenue funds and permanent trust funds in schedules that are usually found at the back of the book, at the back of the audit with the listing. This would be like E-rate and your cemetery trust, or cemetery, some scholarship trust that you have at the schools. As we move into Statement E, this is going to be your revenues, expenditures, and the changes in fund balances. So as you can see, for your general fund, your revenue was a little over 11 million, and your expenditures were 10.4 million. We did do the transfer out of $40,000 that was voted on in March of 2021. So your net change to fund balance was $761,000. So you'll see the increase from your July 1st of 1.5 to 2.2 million. Schedule 1 is your comparison for general fund of your actuals to what was budgeted. This is where we can see, so your revenues that were budgeted versus what was brought in was just about spot on. Charges for services, that's going to be your tuition. So you had a few more students than what was actually budgeted. I think this is, you know, you really, I, I, I think that's pretty darn accurate, pretty close to being accurate. Your expenditures, actuals compared to what was budgeted, this is where you're going to see where a majority, most of that savings was and where most of your change to fund balance is going to come in. Most of that coming from regular instruction up here with the $891,000. We have to remember for FY21, this was COVID. You had just budgeted and just voted in March of '21, and then two weeks later, the schools closed for COVID. And so schools were closed during FY21 for at least most of the year. So expenditures weren't being spent. And for most of the schools, we see a large increase to fund balance because of the pandemic. So seeing the increase to fund balance is not unusual for FY21 because of the pandemic. I think there were also some other issues that came into play. We found when we were going through the audit that there were some budgeting issues. When we talked to the SU board, we mentioned that healthcare budgeting at the SU had increased by 500. Well, it carried over into Rockingham, and we put, it was over budget by about $300,000 to what the actual expenditures were. So that played a factor into the excess of budget over actuals as well. This is also one of the first years that ED budgeted on e-finance. And we know the struggles that happened on e-finance. So those are just a few of the factors to take into consideration when we look to see what the, when you're comparing what was budgeted to what the actuals actually came in at with that. The remaining schedules are going to show what your special revenues and your permanent funds are. Special revenues, this would be an E-rate fund. And permanent funds, this would be, you have some scholarship funds, just a few small scholarship funds in your account with that. So some other things. So these are the numbers that we got to after coming in, looking at them, and doing quite a bit of auditing and looking.
Miranda, can you, Miranda, probably is now a good time to share that they brought in an external person to actually help reconcile the books, you know, to, to really get it to this point where you could audit.
Yes. Christine Balk, who used to work with Wyndham Northeast. Y'all contracted with her to come in and help reconcile some of your asset accounts and liability accounts for all of your entities to get to a point that we were able to reconcile. She found, she was able to find some mistakes that just needed to be corrected. And I would say material mistakes that we had to journal to get to fix to that point. One of those mistakes being a $645,000 assessment payment that was made from Rockingham that went to the supervisory union that was never recorded. It was a cash transfer that never got reported on Rockingham's expenditure side. Never got recorded at the SU as a revenue. And so your assessments was not, were not reduced by that amount. So when we found it and we plugged it in, Rockingham essentially overpaid your assessment by $645,000. It was found and it was corrected, and we were able to book it. And that is in addition to the almost $500,000 that you're going to receive back from the S, from the SU for the assessment reconciliation for, for, for the SU. That hasn't been taken into consideration yet with your financials.
And just so everybody knows, it hasn't been taken into consideration yet because it hasn't happened. As of June 30, 21, it's actually happened during this fiscal year, '22.
I'm sure there's, Ron, is there anything else they need to?
Yeah, so I, I think they know, and talking with this conversation all with Andy, that, that kind of states the, you know, the financial picture for June of '21. I know that there were some concerns at the SU meeting on, you know, kind of how you got there, especially with the overassessment. We provided that information to management back last spring. And Miranda, was it fair to say that even when you came in to do the audit, you know, that, that, that they had not posted the entries and basically knew about the overassessment, even though it was provided to them last fiscal year?
Correct.
So, so that was certainly a concern and a lot of conversation that we had with, with Andy. And, you know, and again, the management letter to you all wasn't flattering last year. There's a lot of the same repeat performances, you know, this year with some of the concerns that we saw and, you know, and, you know, so, so we, we've, we've had this workout plan with, you know, with Andy to, you know, for lack of a better word, to put everything on the table, you know, as far as what you've done. Andy's bought in some external people, you know, with some accounting. We talked about some accounting support at the SU to the point where I believe that a, an accountant was actually put into the budget, you know, which I think will be a big help and, you know, but, but I think that obviously there needs to be a verification process, you know, in place that's certainly better than, than in past. And e-finance certainly has posed its challenges, but I think that there was clearly some, some continued struggles, you know, by management to, to really understand its craft and, you know, and provide all the boards with, with, with information. And when you've got to depend on your auditors to come in and, you know, talk about overassessments and, you know, the fact that $645,000, you know, was, was paid and, you know, it really, for over a year, you know, nothing virtually was done by the business office. Those are some big concerns, folks.
I'm muted. Ron and I forgot the other, the.
Miranda.
Miranda's. Could you comment on the difference in the debt service that's shown here in terms of the, I can't move the screen. You know, the, the, the numbers come out about right, but for some reason there's.
The difference, I think, was just the way that the payments were allocated on there. But you can still see there's about a $16,000 difference between the two. And, and we could provide, Andy, if you want a copy of the debt schedule, you know, with all the pieces of the debt with the leases and the debt on it. I think, Andy, it's, it's pretty clear that somebody put debt where, you know, a piece of debt in principle, you know, where it should have been in interest, so.
Okay, all right.
But there was still a $16,000 variance, as I remember, you know, and what was actually budgeted for and what was paid.
Okay. The, you know, I, I know this is the, the focus is on 2021, but in 2020, clearly the, 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 the fund balance was, I guess, $1,526,000. The, was that all basically the difference between what was collected and what was expended?
Since the beginning of time, yes. And of that $1,500,000, you guys used $300,000-ish, you know, to reduce, you know, your taxation for this fiscal year that ended.
Right. Of course, we, we didn't, we never, they never applied the 171 to 2022.
Yeah.
So we're applying it to 2023.
Yeah. And one of, one of the things that we certainly are working, you know, and have, you know, worked with Andy as far as going forward with your budgets is to take some of these large fund balances and, you know, even absent of the overassessment that, that Miranda referred to for FY21, that's going to be discussed, I think, in FY22, '23, you know, is to really kind of get closer to doing that and, you know, have up with a constructive plan. Because basically the statute allows you two years to kind of throw it at tax relief, throw it into some kind of capital reserve, you know. And clearly, I think that those are all needs. And now that you really have a number here, you know, going into, you know, your, your next budget season and going forward, you know, I, I think you can get closer to doing, to accomplishing both of those things in Rockingham.
Okay. The, the other, the other issues are really just based on our, the functioning of our business office. We really are relying on consultants right now. And, you know, obviously, our, our biggest job, certainly one of Andy's biggest jobs, is, is getting the proper staffing into that, into that office.
Yeah, I know, I know that there was conversations about adding some accounting support in there. And I believe that that's one of the consultants. And I know the, you know, as Miranda referred to, your former controller that you bought back in to help. I know that she was certainly indicative, based on the books and kind of her concerns, you know, that were noted, you know, that that certainly was an easy recommendation to bring that kind of accounting support. And I just know that that was a conversation piece at the SU level.
Right.
That was for all districts.
Yeah. Well, you know, one of the things is that you mentioned the tuition, the tuition funds that we received. And those weren't, weren't collected until after the fact. And, you know, we have no assurances that we're billing for, for tuition in the current fiscal year, the 2022 fiscal year. So hopefully we are, hopefully it won't be an audit adjustment when the, when June 30th comes here, so.
Okay, Andy, did you want to comment?
I, I just wanted to assure Jigs that we have put a process in place so that we are ensuring that we are billing the different districts for tuition on a regular basis, starting the minute we found out that that wasn't happening. So that, that is taking place.
Good, good, thank you.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work and a lot of dialogue and a lot of, I think, attention to detail that's being paid now that certainly we kind of wish for the, you know, past year had, had happened. But I know Andy's been very responsive as we've been bringing him the concerns that we've seen as a result of this audit over the past three, three months, you know, three and a half months. I know he's been very responsive into putting those things in place.
The, what about the, what, what kind of oversight or review do you do of our, the various grants? You know, Title 1, and of course, now in the, in the era of ESER or HARPA, what kind of review are you doing with regards to those?
We do a, we do an audit called Uniform Guidance or Single Audit, and that's all done at the SU level where all the grants run through the SU and, you know, and then basically accounted for, you know, district by district with those funds. So that's all done at the SU level.
Okay, so we, we'll, we'll see, we'll see that.
Correct. And, and just to let you know, there's been some issues, you know, at the SU level, you know, that we, we basically weren't finished our compliance testing at the last time back in, Andy, what was it, December, January, when we had the meeting with the SU?
Yes.
Yeah, but there's some concerns, you know, certainly, you know, about the, you know, the controls and best practices over some of the federal funds as well.
Yeah, because that's, obviously, that's very critical that we get that, that addressed. And, and of course, the, the big question, I think, in all, all of our, the board members' minds is, was there any misappropriation of funds? Did any individual gain, you know, at the expense of failure to disclose or, or just inappropriately gained where they shouldn't have? I mean, that's, that's a real, real concern that we have, particularly when you see the mayhem that's been dis-evident from, from your report.
I would just simply say that, that we're not prepared to talk about that, you know, certainly, especially in this kind of forum. But certainly, you know, being the, you know, the SU board and with the federal funds and the oversight with all the respective districts, you know, there, there was a regression, you know, clearly in some of the best practices. I think that we literally have had to ask Andy, you know, some, some really tough questions that he didn't know. I can tell you this, you know, some, your, your, your management, your past management was very cooperative, you know, with us, you know, and getting us some answers. You know, I know that there's been turnover, literally, you know, with the top three positions, including the business manager. But I can assure you, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, you know, were, were very forthcoming with information, with some concerns, you know, to which the point that they talked about us before their departure with the SU. And Miranda, would you, you know, without getting into any really details of the depth of those conversations, would you add anything else to that?
I wouldn't. They reached out, they, they had conversations with us. And, and I think it was, it, it helped us in, in doing our single audits.
They were very cooperative, and they were forthright and give us this information. I'll certainly just say that.
I guess that's good.
Yeah, it is. Unfortunately, you know, when you, when you kind of have those conversations, there's really not a lot of good that comes out of those conversations, especially when it's a year old, you know, and just some of the, some of the practices. And Andy, we, I think Andy's been well briefed, you know, on, on what the concerns are. You know, there's, there's just a proper place and time. And given the fact we haven't finalized the federal, it speaks of that. You know, there'll be another date and time for that conversation.
Okay.
We're not going to hold anything back. We're working for you. But as I say, there's the right time for that information to, to come out. There's still some due diligence being provided with the, with the information that was provided to us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any of the board, other board members have questions? Megan or Jason?
I don't have any questions right now.
Jason?
No, I do not.
Jim, are you all set or you have more questions?
No, I'm all set.
Andy, did you need to, any comments?
Not a good time.
Okay, Ron and Miranda, we really appreciate you're doing that and getting that information to us so that we had at least something to look at for tonight.
Yeah. Glad to help. And listen, we're not trying to avoid any questions. It's just going to be a better time to talk to you, Priscilla, about that information. So we, we look forward to some follow-up questions to the SU and to all the respective districts too, so.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Miranda.
Take care, folks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And comments, are there any others out there that would like to, to comment at this time before I read these letters? Chris, can we?
Just a quick question. The agenda item, I think it's 8A, refers to the tuition. And I just can't tell from the wording of what's on the agenda what the, the actual issue that the board is going to talk about is.
It's simply, and I'll answer that, it's simply a setting of the tuition that's done each year.
Okay, so just a little advice. That's one of the things you should be very specific in an agenda about because there's a statutory piece that's involved with setting the tuition. So, you know, it's not, not a huge issue, but it's, it's also helpful for the public to, you know, if, if the agendas were a little more clear, it would really be good for the public too. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I think the word "set" got left off, sorry. All right, we had two letters that came in. One was on January 26th. It said, "Good evening, I'm writing in concern of the mask policy and the weight it's being enforced at the central school. My fourth grade daughter has been required to wear a mask outside this entire school year regardless of which playground she's using. I've been watching the school board meetings regularly, and the principal tells the board that masks are optional outside except for a couple of structures where social distancing can't happen. This, this has never been the case. The new guidelines from AOE regarding masking still says masks should not be required outside. This is on page two of the memo released by Secretary French and Commissioner Levine, released January 13, 2022. Furthermore, the Rockingham School Board adopted policy that the schools are to follow AOE guidelines. At a previous meeting, another parent raised concerns about this, but nothing has happened. Can principals pick and choose how to follow policies? Saxon River allows unmasking outside because it's policy? I told my daughter last week that she can take her mask off outside at school. A teacher required her to put her mask back on. My daughter told the teacher that I gave her permission, and the teacher said it's the rule. Again, what is the point of passing policies if they're not followed? Can I pick and choose which policies I want my daughter to follow? Should I transfer my daughter to Saxon River? That is a sentiment I've been hearing. Most kids are just done at CES. Kindly reply all to whoever responds. I considered adding local newspapers to the email group, but I will wait to see how this is resolved. Again, board policy says follow AOE guidelines. AOE says masks should not be required outside. I will continue to have my daughter remove her mask outside unless the school board requires it. Thanks, Justin Kissel." Thank you, Justin, for writing. Okay, this is from another person. Hello, Priscilla. I realize you may already know this, but as a formality, my name is Patrick Applegate, and I am a Bellas Falls taxpayer as well as a parent to four children attending all three Bellas Falls schools. I have a few COVID policy questions I would like the Rockingham School Board to address as they specifically set and approved all current COVID policies within our school district. One, has the Rockingham School Board participated in any discussions or meetings relating to the effectiveness of the current COVID school district policy at preventing the spread of COVID-19 within our schools since the policy was enacted? Two, has the Rockingham School Board participated in any discussions or meetings relating to any potential negative effects the current COVID school district policy has had on our children, specifically regarding their education and development since it was enacted? Three, what is the Three, what is the current school district plan in regards to the ending of COVID policies within our specific school district? Four, what criteria is currently being used and has been used to determine the continuation or ending of the forced masking of our children and the rest of the COVID policy in our specific school district? Five, can the Rockingham School Board ensure the parents and taxpayers of Bellas Falls that the current school board policy has had no negative impact on our children, specifically compared to other school districts that ended COVID mandates and policies at the beginning of the school year or prior? Six, can the Rockingham School Board ensure the parents and taxpayers of Bellas Falls that the current school board policy creates an equal educational and developmental environment experience for our children to compete with those children from school districts with no COVID mandates, specifically forced all-day masking? Seven, has the Rockingham School Board taken any action to identify or address potential future impacts to our children involving education and development resulting from the COVID policy of approved and put into place? I address this email to you as the chair of the board, but would prefer the board approach it as a whole. The answers to these questions are very important to me and other folks within our school district. As a reminder, some of these policies have been in place and continue to be in place against the consent of parents and what they feel is best for their children. And then next, please respond via official email to maintain a clear and transparent public record. It's actually being read here at the meeting, and some of those things will be covered under, um, some of our other unfinished business within the meeting. Thank you for writing and letting us know of your concerns. We'll look at number five, approve the minutes from 12/20/21, 1/3/22, 1/18/22, and 1/19/22. We probably should take those possibly independently. So if we could look at the ones from December 20 and have a motion for that one, please?
I'll move, Priscilla, to approve the December, was it December 20? Sorry.
December 20/21.
Minutes.
Okay. Um, are there any corrections or anything that we need to change in that? Jason, Megan, or Jim?
No, I believe they are fine.
Okay, so, um, let's take a vote to approve those. Megan?
So sorry. Yes. Sorry.
All right, Megan. Uh, Jason?
Yes.
And Jigs?
These, I, you know, I keep getting muted and I've lost the screen and everything else, so, uh, yes, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Jigs, I apologize. I, I muted you because there's, there's a little bit of background feedback noise, and it's that's the reason why, but, um, I'll, I'll leave you unmuted. I'll leave you unmuted.
The next was, the next ones were, were basically like mostly budget meetings, and we can either do them separately for January.
Do them together. I'll, I'll move, uh, all of the rest of the minutes.
Thank you, Jigs. Appreciate that. Hey, is there, are there any corrections on those? Any changes? Um, the one, the only one I saw, and I don't know how it was in the minutes, but, but it should have been correct, I would have thought, was that, um, it should have been voted on or before March 1st. That's on the January 19th minutes. And since the warning is, was correct for the date at least, at that point, I would assume that that needs to be corrected. Is there any?
I can't hear anything.
We, one correction on the January 19 minutes, changing it from March 2nd to March 1st to act on the articles. All right, so, um, if there are no other corrections, let's vote on that, and they'll be, um, approved with the correction. Megan?
Vote yes.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Actually, those have been approved. Thank you. All right, uh, principals report. Do we have the principals here?
We, we, Carrie, we have Carrie.
There's Laura.
I'm here, yep. Who did you want to go first, Priscilla?
First, Laura.
Okay. All right, here I go. Hello, everyone. Hope you're all well. Um, so we currently have 74 students still. Um, we had our NAEP assessment for our fourth graders. Super proud of them for the, their engagement and for persevering through, uh, an assessment. They did a great job, um, and had some positive feedback from the administrators of the NAEP assessment as well. Um, Sandy Stanhope, I've mentioned her name before, but she's from the All Learners Network. She's going to be working with our classroom teachers tomorrow morning, providing some math coaching to further develop our implementation of the Math Workshop Model, um, and to meet our, the needs of our students during WINTIME for those that are provided with some math interventions then. Uh, for the past two weeks, um, during our team meetings, we've been, uh, really focusing on our winter assessments and celebrating growth, but also determinating, determining, uh, the needs of how best to address, um, student needs in various areas, both within the classroom and during our "what I need" time, um, and our intervention time with our reading and math specialists. Um, healthcare worker appreciation. So, um, our, um, speech and language pathologist, Cheryl Gay Sherwin, uh, presented an idea to some elementary schools within our SU uh, to do posters, um, to appreciate healthcare workers at local hospitals. And so our art, uh, teacher, Mr. Palmizzano, and all of our students created a beautiful, um, huge poster and banner, and then some individual posters as well, uh, which will be brought to the Springfield Hospital. I posted one of those pictures, um, in our last newsletter. So, um, just a nice way to thank, um, our local healthcare workers. Um, in addition, Mrs. Fuller, our school counselor, um, has been working with the students on kindness, um, and, uh, has created with them, uh, hearts of appreciation, um, during her SEL time. And, um, those hearts will go to healthcare workers at Mount Ascotney Hospital. And, um, they've also been distributed to staff within our building, um, in place, you know, different places around our building, which really has brightened, uh, my day, I know, and, and the days of others as well. Um, tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow, but Wednesday, February 9th is our first, um, half-day of in-service, uh, specific to social and emotional learning, and we look forward to working with Carrie Newton, um, who will facilitate learning about restorative practices. Uh, we are, um, already immersed in our circus residency. We have Troy Wonderley, um, with us this week. Um, and he is just a, a wonderful person, but also, uh, so encouraging of students and, um, teaching them to persevere, um, and to develop circus skills. But it's really a lot more than circus skills. It really is about that personal growth. And so we look forward to sharing, uh, a recording of the show, uh, with families on Friday. Again, we've had to reschedule our Free to Read Every Day event. Um, it's really, I think this is our fourth reschedule. Um, but our next date, hopefully, is February 14th, so our fourth graders look forward to that. Um, we're also planning a winter carnival for the afternoon of, um, February 18th. And, uh, thank you to Mrs. Douglas and Mrs. White and Mrs. Fuller and Nurse Jen for organizing that event for our students. Um, let's see, what else? On the 28th, um, we have an in-service day for teachers, and classroom teachers will be working with All Learners Network again, uh, specific to math instruction, uh, to further develop their math workshop model. And our specialists will be working with Carrie Newton to further develop their SEL skills and, uh, with students. Um, let's see, we have February break coming up the week of 21st, and, um, of course, and, uh, last but not least, um, I again want to acknowledge our teachers, um, who continue to amaze me with their outstanding lessons that are always engaging, creative, and purposeful. I appreciate their dedication, perseverance, and genuine compassion and commitment for the students that they serve each and every day. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions for Laura? Okay, so, I guess, if not, we'll go on to, um, Carrie.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you. Let me just pull up my notes here for one second. Um, so similar to Laura, we are gearing up for our NAEP assessment, and so we will be doing ours on the 17th for our fourth graders. I'd like to wish Ms. Alexa Phelps and Ms. Sarah Lyon a happy, uh, School Counseling Week. Um, so they're working hard, as always, supporting our students and families, so we hope their week goes well. We are doing MAPS assessment. We had finished that. There were two students who were still sick, um, and so we were hoping to finalize those once everybody was healthy and ready to go. Um, we did have to bring in some more subs due to some staff illnesses, um, and some extra help for the assessments to get that done. So thank you to all the subs that we had coming in, many of whom were former CES employees, too. Um, and just a big shout out, similar to Laura saying, for wonderful CES teachers for their hard work. They are really fantastic with supporting each other, keeping each other inspired and laughing. Um, and again, just bringing in some familiar faces to help support around the building. We are doing our data analysis right now and planning for groups. We were doing and running records, Fanta's, for Fanta's and Penel, our DIBELS and other assessments. So the teachers are really hard at work and planning for student support. Uh, trying to avoid loss of learning from COVID, too. Uh, we do have some more cases of COVID, so we're working with families and contact tracing, and, and big shout out to Nurse Jen, uh, Millie Berry, the health assistant, and Mrs. Rounds for all their hard work, supporting families, getting tests home, and everybody, uh, back to healthy school time. And just another reminder, if your child has been vaccinated outside of CES, Nurse Jen had asked if you could bring in winter doses or a complete to bring in the vaccination card or copy, um, so we can have those for our records. Uh, a big shout out to the Lions Club. We were finally able, uh, to do the reassessment for some students that missed it the first time around, uh, due to quarantining. And so they had their eye exams, and the Lions Club has been fabulous with that. So we sent a few students to Dr. Johnson, um, who've been able to get glasses and really get some more further, further medical assessments based on this initial assessment that Lions Club does. It's a great benefit to our school. We did do a video, thank you, and we appreciate it again, once again, all of our community partners, um, for everything they've done around the holidays. We, as Laura said, are finalizing our PD for this Wednesday and the 28th. And we too had our circus week before, um, at the end of January, so it was a little bit different performance. And so we were able to send it, uh, back TV. Uh, we sent some popcorn home. The families were able to watch it in the comfort of their own homes. Not quite the same, but again, Troy Wonderley and Peter Laurie did a fabulous job bringing this event to life, and everybody had a great time. And just again, gearing up for February break through the 21st and then through Town Meeting Day, so. Uh, had a slight little flood in the office, and again, thanks to Cindy Rounds, Jane Stewie, Terry Obahoski, Judy Cray, many other people, um, from the building, support staff, Jim DeBelk, Ken Lawrence, Sully and Rick for helping to get it cleaned up. Working with Visbit on just trying to work on, there was a monitor damage, a phone damage, and some books, so. I appreciate the support getting that done. Very much. That's about it. We do allow students to take off masks. I will just quickly say that, but any other questions or comments?
Carrie, how, how is your enrollment right now?
We are at 153 students.
Any of the board members have questions? Okay, not seeing any. Sue, you're up.
Thank you, Priscilla. Uh, board members, it's, uh, good to meet with you this evening and to share my board report. Uh, middle school has been a buzz of activity since returning from the holidays. Our basketball teams have played games both at home and away, allowing the players opportunities to compete. And it's hard to believe that we're already gearing up for spring for sports. Our eighth grade student council is planning a Fun Spirit Week next week. It should be a great time for all staff and students. Speaking of our eighth grade students, they met with their counselors from the high school to begin the process of selecting classes. For next year, they will be going to the high school on February 16th to, uh, tour the school, meet staff, and finalize their schedules. Each of our teams have begun identifying at least one expectation they want students to focus on during the week. Students who have successfully mained poise, maintained poise, and fulfilled the expectation for the week can then participate in a predetermined fun activity. Currently, 76% of the students have been able to play three-team kickball, watch a movie, and/or go outside for walks, and also play games, uh, for, in the library. Our February 9th early release will continue our focus on social-emotional learning through, um, responsive, um, practices. All of our student, students, uh, took the MAPS assessment on January 25th and 26th, and currently, our academic teams are disaggregating the data which they will use to inform instruction. As always, a huge thank you to Nurse Kat for all that she does every day and for scheduling our vaccination clinic. We were able to vaccinate 24 of our middle school students. Currently, our enrollment, um, is as follows. Uh, in fifth grade, we have 48 students, sixth grade, 40, seventh grade, 71, eighth grade, 78, for a total of 237 students, and our average daily attendance is 88%. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Sue? I'm not seeing any. I really appreciate that. I, I am, you gave us the average daily attendance, so that is looking better. It looks like it's an, an improvement, um, over what we were seeing a month ago. And I know when I saw the numbers from the, the state on the, on the, um, uh, news today, it was saying that the, um, cases are going down, so hopefully we're headed in the right direction. Are you seeing the same kind of trends at Saxon's River and Central, or? Go ahead. No, Carrie?
No, sadly, our cases are maintaining and if not increased.
Okay, so we're still having to deal a lot with that.
I would say at Saxon's River, I think we are over the hump. I'm, fingers crossed. Um, we still have a few cases, but, um, but, uh, not as many as we once had.
Uh, Priscilla, I have a question for the, uh, for the, uh, principals. Um, what percent of your student body, uh, is vaccinated?
I'd have to get back with you for the actual number, which I'd be happy to get that for you. Um, I would say it's probably in the 40% range, 40s, maybe upper 40% at the middle school, but I'll get you the exact percentage.
Do you have a, do you have a feeling, uh, Sue, as to why it's so low?
Um, I think it's, uh, you know, I think it's parental, um, choice not to have their child vaccinated. Some school, some student, uh, hesitancy, uh, and my numbers might be off some, um, but I, I would say that's probably pretty much the reason why, which I think is what we see nationwide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, certainly New England-wide. Um, but I will say it's very, it was very promising for us to vaccinate 24 students at our clinic last week.
Yeah, I think, you know, you, you heard the two letters that Priscilla read from concerned parents, and it's, you know, you can see the, the dilemma that, that a board member faces in terms of, uh, the concern about- the concern about masking that comes through from the parents. And the concern that that we have as a board in terms of the the lack of vaccination. So it really is a dilemma. I certainly don't have, I don't have the the answer. I hope I hope that Andy and and you folks working together can help us address address this because, you know, clearly, we want, we want students vaccinated. And I think if we got students vaccinated, the concern over masking would be greatly reduced. And so, you know, it really is something that's going to require efforts on the part of all the vested parties, parents, administration, teachers and and the superintendent's office. So anyway, thank you for that. The other principals don't have to answer unless unless you've got good news.
We got four more, received four more vaccination card verification. So we're almost, we went from 48% to about 50% this week. It's Monday.
Okay, good. But again, low.
I'll say from Saxons River, and this data is as of January 14th, but at that time, let's see, 55% were not vaccinated, 16% partially vaccinated and approximately 28% were fully vaccinated. We did have our second clinic on the third where several of those partially vaccinated students became fully vaccinated, but I don't have the exact number today.
Thank you.
Good information. Thank you. Thanks for asking that question, Jigs also.
Priscilla, this is Sue, if I may, I apologize. But a piece of, I saw it as really good news today. Today was the first day I did not have any students on the absence list marked as out for quarantining. And that's been for months. So today was the first day we didn't have any quarantined students.
At least a couple of them are starting to go in that direction and it's really hopeful. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you to all that you do and all your staff does. We just really appreciate them. Thank you. Moving on to committees, I put recovery team on here. The recovery team met this afternoon. We had a two-hour session. We were meeting last summer weekly for two-hour sessions, but now we're down to not meeting quite as often, about every two months. And the, with the administration team meeting in between. One thing that was brought out after recovery team meeting was that a challenge was to buy into why the students are in school. They had autonomy last year and and they knew and they had a choice in when they had to go on and when they could learn. And now they're back in school. So that engagement and that change and that putting them back in, the teachers kind of have to reteach how a student and they have to buy into helping them to be students. One teacher brought up that just even teaching paragraphing, which you might expect at the level she was teaching at, but because of having been out, there wasn't that consistency and that teaching that had gone on. So the expectations had to be adjusted as well for both the teachers and for the students. And then stamina is a big issue because with the use of technology, your stamina differs. The use of the screen, the use of those things, they stay engaged with academic work at different levels and how long they can. So the stamina has to be built back up as well. So the team today discussed the three areas that the state has kind of given us to do, which was academic achievement success was one group, another group was the social emotional, and the third group was engaging the students. And as work goes on with that, it's addressing getting our kids back involved, getting them back up to the point that they can be the same kind of students they were before. And also those new students coming in, those new kindergartners and first graders that haven't been in school. So there's a lot of that going on and a lot of discussions out there and a lot of supports that the academic team is looking into as well. Andy, do you want to add anything to that or?
I think, you know, we continue to work on it. You know, one of the things that also came out is just we need to be clear with our, sharing our message with all of our stakeholders, which we're working on doing. And but, you know, I think the the other piece, just going back to the autonomy piece, because I spoke a little of that. Some of it is not necessarily in my group of talking about stamina, but that when students in the last year and a half were working remotely or in the hybrid, they had the opportunity to, they could do a little bit of work, they could do all their math at one time. So they had, they had choice of when they were doing things. And now that they're back into the structure of school, the structure of school hasn't changed to adjust with how students now learn and potentially could be learning better. And so that was a lot of the discussion of how do we look at our institution? And the shape of our institution, where kids come in, the bell tells them where to be, they learn, they go to, the bell rings, they go to the next, you know, it's built on an industrial model. And are we shifting that industrial model to potentially tap new learners?
Thank you. Did anyone have on the board have questions about that or is that enough information for you at this point?
It was good. It was great information from me, Priscilla. Thank you.
Okay, um, policy committee, I guess that's up to me too, since I'm chair of that committee for the SU. This, we met this week and we covered B3, which is is the alcohol and drug-free workplace. And B4, which is drug and alcohol test transportation employees. We talked about some other ones too, but those two are ready to be posted and we'll get those posted so that we can get those approved. The updating hasn't been done for the last, who knows how long, well, some of them are dated 2009. And it's supposed to be done like every three to five years. So we're trying to get all the required ones done and up to date in the in the committee. And we're reapproving some of the policies that have been already warned over the past month under 7D. But those are the new ones we worked on. And then special ed needs a whole lot of policies to run special ed and policies and procedures. So possibly a separate manual will need to be done for that so that we can address all of those. Okay. Third one I had was other, and I was thinking maybe update on ESSR. ESSR is actually dividing into three areas. Maintenance, HVAC systems and a learning center that we're discussing right now and maybe let Andy speak on just a very brief overview of ESSR because.
Well, I mean, I'm not prepared to, but I mean, briefly, we're spending money in a lot of different areas, so not just in those. That has been, the conversation has been around our ARP ESSR, which, or ESSR 3 funds of how best to spend and look at those. 20% of the funds has to be set aside for loss of learning or to address loss of learning, which leaves about $10 million left to look at other uses and infrastructure. So the committee is really on an early learning center that would be a birth to, I'll get it wrong. Jennifer's probably on here and she'll yell at me, but a birth to a birth to kindergarten. So we would be addressing that air, that timeframe. But also looking at infrastructure projects within our buildings. We are looking to connect with a group manager for us that can really tell us, you know, maybe there's other areas that could be focused on that have a COVID-related lens. So that's our big piece, so.
Yeah, I just wanted a brief overview because I know that's a really busy committee. And I think I don't have any other committees that I know of. I'm not thinking there's any others that we need to report on. I'm not seeing anything from the board members. All right, unfinished business for discussion, the COVID protocol update. And I didn't know whether maybe some of the questions that we had earlier, we might want to at least do a little bit of comment on and then I turn that over for maybe a response. As a general thing from anybody.
Well, we follow the AOE's guidance, guidance and recommendations. We have, I have weekly meetings that I attend with the Secretary of Education. A lot of times we hear one thing and then by the time the the actual written messaging comes out, things have changed. There was at one point where the AOE originally had said that masks were okay outside. And then as the Omicron variant was spreading rapidly, there was a memo that came out that said that mask should be outside. And then almost, you know, too fast to keep up, it came out with a new one that said mask should, you know, be taken out, taken off outside. So so there's a lot of that we get. And the surveillance testing was allowed, that was provided a weekly surveillance testing. They're now moving the antigens that everyone is considered a presumed close contact. We then hand out tests to families, for families to test. And if students are symptom-free, they can send them to school. And if they're not, we ask families to keep them home. And depending on if a student is vaccinated or unvaccinated, the state recommends that we give out a certain number of tests. So if you're, if you're vaccinated, you get two tests. Basically, and you take it within 24 hours. And if you're unvaccinated, you get five tests so that you can test, or 10 actually, so you can test daily. So it's inequities in that, but that's the way the tests are if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. I think one of the questions is, you know, what is the board doing or what is the schools doing to move away from it? I mean, we're continuing to follow the guidance that we're provided. Currently, the AOE extended their mask mandate to February 28th and they'll revisit it that time. You know, so so we continue to, we're always a little bit behind where the AOE is because they put out guidance, then we need to take that guidance and meet with our our health staff and look at how do we apply it best to our schools. But as I said, a lot of times I'll hear something on Thursday, we'll get something on a Friday, it might change by Monday. And so it's just trying to keep up with that. So.
One of the questions, do you know of, which I'm, as a board member, I would have trouble answering, is I don't know of other school districts that ended the COVID mandates and policies at the beginning of the school year. There was one way up north, the really small school, I think, that that may have, but I don't think any of the other ones in the state did. Do you know of?
I know of no, I've heard of no school that has that has relaxed any mandates. If schools reach an 80% threshold, there's, there are some incentive plans, 80% being vaccinated to remove masks and the mask mandate. There's another incentive plan for vaccination that if, quote me the numbers, they're pretty high though. I want to say 85%. If 85% of the student population is vaccinated, you can apply for a grant that the students then can make choices on how to spend that money. So there are some of those incentive plans, but as of right now, especially in our area, I don't know of any.
And and I agree. A lot of the questions there, I'm not, the mental and social help is being addressed and they are looking at that in different studies. Megan or Jigs or Jason, do you have, I know I sent this to you to look at, so I don't know if there's anything that you want to address at this time, you want to think about this and we can have a future discussion on it or where you're at at this point. I guess I need to hear from you because it has specifically been asked that, you know, that the board think about these questions.
I have a.
No, go ahead, Jason.
All right, thank you. It just, at this current point in the pandemic, I mean, I've recently seen on the news that they have now either have or will be shortly reclassifying as an endemic. I think we're finally heading towards the end of the situation and by all means, I think the people that need to feel comfortable wearing masks, they should. And the other side of that is if we start allowing people not to, now we have people not comfortable. So how do we approach this? I mean, we can't really make everybody happy either way we go on it. So it's kind of a problem.
It's a, it's a dilemma. My, my comment is that my understanding from from my time on the board here, which is relatively short, is that we are following the state guidance. And I think, I think we have to rely on Andy and our principals to apply that consistently. And I don't, I'm not aware, Priscilla or others, that we have have taken a position contrary to following the state guidance. So I think, I think to try to answer the 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 letters, I think that what I would, what I would say is that we we need to continue to follow the state guidance and 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 ask Andy and the principals to apply that consistently. Okay, that's number one. Number two is, the obvious concern that I have is I believe in order to try to get our kids back in the swing of of school, that the the best solution is to vaccinate our kids. And I think that we need parents, I think, to be more concerned about getting their kids vaccinated than whether they're wearing a mask outside, quite frankly. I think, you know, you gotta, I think you just addressed this from the seriousness standpoint. So anyway, but that's my comment, Priscilla.
And I appreciate that, Jigs. Thank you. I appreciate both of you. Megan, did you want to add anything?
You know, I'll just add as a, as a board member, I I appreciate the balance that the administration has to walk between AOE and parents. I would just like discussions as we move forward as a group to at least have some goalposts somewhere, at least have a discussion as a group of what our exit strategy is or isn't. We've just kind of been surviving and rowing our boat as we can since the pandemic started. But I would like to not only solicit some feedback from from parents and just hear what what our community, our stakeholders have to say. And I'd also like to just have an open, honest discussion as as a school. And I'd also like to just have an open, honest discussion as, as a school district. What our goals are, what, what our exit strategy is, what matrix are we working out of? You know, as things continue to change, I'm, I'm not in favor of rushing anything. But I do think it's maybe time to at least start having some intelligent, intelligent, open discussions, you know, about what we're trying to do and, and what our data is. I mean, data is our friend, so, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Megan. That's a really good points. There's, I, I think it's, it's such a scary thing. It's been politicized and it's, it's been out there and, and everybody has been scared. It is not a fun disease to have, as we all know. Parents have had it, kids have had it, school members who've had it. It's not fun. And it, it really is something that has caused a lot of worry. I know when I, when I asked last year for plans of what we would do when, you know, to get to the next step. Not that we had to put them into effect right then, but I wanted planning. And I know at that point, parents pushed back because, and everybody pushed back because they were looking at it as pushing too fast. But you're right, plans, by planning, people feel more secure. People feel more comfortable. And so I agree, discussions around that, what the plans are going to be. That's why recovery team has met so much. And that was one thing that we also did discuss today was several times that, you know, the impact that COVID has had and the impact that masks have had and the impact that all of these things have had on our kids and what we can do to offset those as well as the just having to been out of school so much last year. So all of those are really important issues. And I think as we go forward, it probably is, is definitely time that we start doing a plan for that. I guess what I would like is if our administration could start looking at, you know, planning for, for those type of things. I, we can't really decide because every time we plan, like you said, the, the AOE changes it on us.
Well, it's not, it's not even that. I mean, you know, we, we plan, we have plans and we, 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 we have, it's up on our website. The, the thing is, is that we planned for being back in school with no variant. And then we had the Delta variant. And so then we shifted our plans to address the use of the Delta variant. And then the Omicron variant came. And so they're very different. And at the beginning of the school year, we didn't have tests to stay. We didn't have the other means that we have. And so our plan adjusts continuously as we get other guidance, but also as the variants change. So, you know, well, appreciate and understand what, what Megan's saying to, you know, set a goalpost that, you know, we're going to take masks off at a certain date if we, you know, if all, we've got a new variant coming through that says we need to go back to masks. I mean, I, I just, we might set ourselves up because if we say we're going to do something at a certain date, then people hold us to those dates and say, well, you said you're going to do it at this date. Well, I mean, things change. And so, I mean, we're, I'm open to conversations and having it. I met with a, a group to potentially bring back back.
Yeah, I think probably any, any set date is, is not probably what, what we're looking at. I think what we're looking at is more this, this would be, you know, something that we should be considering and contingent upon this happening, something else, more than a specific date. Because I don't think a specific date, like you said, would be, works. Well, right now, we, we need to continue the masking until February 28th. Maybe at that point, we will be at a level that the AOE will decide we don't need it.
Yeah, I think the other thing is at the beginning of the fall, we thought when we wrote our plan, that we were going to be able to have remote learning as an option. We have, you're in school or you're not in school. And that makes it very, very difficult, especially when a large percentage of a building is, you know, at like Saxons Ridge. There was a week where, one week where a whole grade was out, third grade was out. But then we were still doing remote learning because we still value that and we don't want kids just to sit home. And so the teacher still did that. But by, right by the time the third grade was coming back, kindergarten, first grade, second grade and fourth grade went out for a week. And so, you know, we continued to offer remote learning. We're going to ask for a waiver on those days. But I, it's extremely frustrating and I, and I, I understand the frustration with parents. I have kids my own, you know, and, you know, when they're not feeling well and, you know, my son for a few days had the sniffles and whatnot. And so we kept him home and didn't send him to school. You know, where he goes to school, he's able to actually zoom in and continue to participate. You know, so that's an advantage, but it, it is frustrating and, you know.
I hear your frustration. I, I
Okay, well, we should move on, I think. Yeah, I think we've beaten this to death.
Next item is, is the, on response to the BFMS staff letter. And we'll come back to the other discussions at some other time. So can you tell us what, what has happened with the, the staff letter that, that they wrote us last time with their frustration with the hiring and the, and the not having substitute teachers and all of that? I'm assuming that with the improvements at the middle school, we may be in a little better situation anyway. But I, and I also want to open it up so that if there are any teachers, if they have the ability.
Yeah, I've met with several staff from the middle school. You know, we are continuing to look at new ways to advertise for positions. And so we're looking at some other venues. I've reached out to Keene State and the Castleton. I haven't heard back from either of them yet to see if there's ways that we can tap into, kids who are about to graduate and whatnot. You know, we put a personal plea out to, to, to parents and community members for substitutes. It still continues to be a challenge in doing that, you know. But I, I mean, I think we're open to any new ideas that we can, we can get. And I, I think even with the staff, they, they under, you know, that I spoke with, they understand the challenges. They just felt the need to express those concerns.
And I, and I think we appreciated them, you know, taking that form and letting us know so that we could, we could support in any way we possibly could. Are there any teachers out there that did want to speak? I'm not seeing anybody on there, but.
I don't see none.
No, I don't think so either. They were invited if they wanted to. Okay, the next one was a discussion of physicians. And I think that was just kind of somewhat covered right then too. All physicians are under the CBA, right? As far as I know, all, they're either teacher physicians or, or paras in the schools. There was some mentioned somewhere and I don't know where it was about possibility of non-CBA positions, but I think everything's covered, so.
I, I, I honestly don't know what that's about because I, I, I don't know of staff other than these that will, like, you know, certain administrative assistants and whatnot or, or, you know. So no, we, not every position is under the CBA because there are employees that will. But I don't know, I don't know what the reference there is and what staff we're talking about.
Jason, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, more for just the basic support staff, not the paras, not the teachers, but staff that is not specific to CBA.
All right, Jason, are you referring to custodial staff or?
They're under CBA too.
Or custodial staff is under our CBA. We do have some staff, occupational therapists, because they don't have, they don't fall into a licensed physician by the AOE. And there are a few employee at will positions throughout the district. They tend to be non-certified staff who are filling. Also Carrie Newton, who's our restorative practices person. And off the top of my head, Joe Ellen, Barden, who's the human resources manager. I'm trying to think of some others.
It may have been off the rails, I guess, on that question.
I came from a discussion at the SU, but I think there was some misconception there, possibly Jason, and that because all of them basically are covered, that would be in our schools. Did that help at all?
Yeah, pretty much clarifies it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing is to approve the policies, A1, B1, B2, B5, B7 and C6. Those have all been posted for the warning period of 10 days and they were approved by the SU board. But it says the SU board and its member, member board. So we need to just give a heads up and a support for that, if that's okay. So could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Let's vote, Megan.
Vote yes. Did you hear, did you, did you hear me, Priscilla? I'm sorry, I was coughing.
Thank you. Jason? How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and Jigs?
Yes.
Those have been approved. Thank you. Okay, new business for discussion and action. We need a recommendation from the superintendent as to the tuition, setting the tuition for the Rocky M schools. Last year, our tuition was 16,000 and that was the same as the previous year.
I apologize, Priscilla. I'm not prepared because I was not informed that I was supposed to make a recommendation.
Oh, okay. I left a message, but, okay.
I didn't get that message, so I apologize. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a recommendation.
Okay, so the superintendent doesn't have a recommendation for that. It's usually announced at our annual meeting. So maybe we could at the beginning of that meeting have a recommendation. And as a board, we can, we can set that. Is that okay with, with my board, with the other board members?
Yes, it's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, basically we, we calculate the cost per pupil and that's what we, I believe. It's, it's not, Chris Kibbe, Chris Kibbe could probably give us a what's that?
That's a different figure. Okay, so we'll do that at the beginning of that, that meeting, okay? All right, in preparation for the town meeting, we need to divide up the articles, which we will be discussing at the annual meeting on February 28th. And be ready to be able to just be prepared to discuss those, okay? I would make the motion for articles one and 11. So I'll put my name on those because those are the ones that will be there and will definitely be there in person. I'm hoping to encourage all of our board members that can possibly be there to be there in person because it is, it is easier for the other people to, to see us if we're all there that way. But if not, we certainly will understand. Okay, do you have preferences as to which ones you want to make motions for?
I will be there in person, so I'll be in Florida. It's pretty hard to, I think it's pretty hard to communicate. I think the big, the big one is the, is the budget. Is that number two?
Would you like to take that one?
Well, I think that the, I, I think it would be a good idea to have Andy or, or Kent be there in case there are questions. I think the, you know, as I said, doing it on Zoom at, at the annual meeting, I, I'd be happy to do it, but I, I just don't think it would be that effective. I think it'd be much more effective if somebody was there. And the, the rest of them is just a way of allocating the surplus. So I think anybody could handle that.
Jigs, I'm going to ask you to make that motion now, okay? Because that, that you can be on Zoom to do that.
What day is that?
The 28th. Okay, and, and we've already asked for support for that, so we should be all right. Okay, so are you okay with making that motion?
Yes, for, for which one, for the?
The budget one.
Yeah.
And then support for, you know, explanation as, as needed. Okay, um, let's see, three, four, and six. Three, four, five and six are the 350,000 for each of those years. So can I just assign, and seven, can I just assign those down through for you, Megan and Jason?
I'm fine with that, Priscilla. I'll practice in the mirror, getting all the numbers right, go over my speech.
Split them between the, the two of you. Jigs, would you do number eight, which is the capital improvements one?
Okay.
Nine as well, that's 100,001. And Jason Benson, can you do number 10?
Contingent upon the weather.
Okay.
Which one's number eight, Priscilla?
The capital improvement.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Number nine is the fund balance to create a reserve fund.
Right.
Okay, so that'll give you three, Jigs, eight, nine, two, eight and nine. It'll give Megan three and three, five and seven. And it'll give Jason Benson four, six and 10.
And Priscilla, I'll be prepared to read for Jason Benson in case it's plowing and inclement weather night. So I'll make sure to read over all of them.
You are so appreciated. Thank you, Megan. Really appreciate it.
What, what is, which one's 10?
10 is the payment to the district officers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, is there anything else that you need for preparing for the town meeting that, that I can help you with or support you in?
The only thing I would say, Priscilla, is you know, again, if, if Kent or Andy is there, I'm sure Andy's going to be there, but the Articles 3 through 9 represent the 2 million and, you know, 15,000 or whatever, which is a, which is accumulated surplus for two years, fiscal year 2020 and 2021. And that the, that it's a requirement that we distribute those funds. So it's, it's kind of like a, you know, there, there should be an introduction to, to Articles 3 through 9. And that, that the board has, has, has attempted to, to, to do this in a way that will, that will help our taxpayers in the future for surpluses that were earned in the past. And you know, some, some kind of a, just a general short introduction really takes away a lot of the, you know, I mean, let's face it, anybody could, could argue with what, how we've done this or how we're recommending this, but the fact is it's going to be voted on the next day. And I think it would be just, it's not like it's being voted on. It's just, you know, these are, this, this is a 2, 2 million pot, and here's how we're, here's how we're allocating it, type of thing, so.
Right, I guess they understand.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we will do that. I, we have invited Ron and Miranda, right, and somebody from their firm, and also we're looking, we're also looking into whether somebody from, one of the consultants, I think, as well, but we'll see, we'll see who can be there. Okay? All right, so we do have a executive session, but so we'll have director's comments first. So I'll start with you, Jason. Maybe. Benson, do you want to give us director's comments?
No, I think I'm good tonight.
Okay, thank you. Megan?
I think I am also good. Just, you know, a quick thank you to the staff and everything, especially our, our nurses across the whole district, answering all the questions and all, handling everything that's thrown at them every day. Direct beneficiary here for multiple, multiple reasons. I just appreciate all of our nursing staff. Thank you so much.
Jigs?
Parents, please get your child immunized against COVID-19. It's the solution to the, to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say just remember that everybody is stressed. Everybody is overwhelmed with everything that's going on. We're all wanting normalcy to return and what we perceive as normalcy. So try being as extra kind to each one of those people that you run into each day. It's, it'll come back to you a thousandfold. Thanks. Can I have a, first, we have to determine, they decided we didn't need to do this in two, determine that we're going into executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations and personnel, a personnel matter, which are, hold up. I have it. I just need to pull it. Which premature knowledge could place the board and/or an individual at a disadvantage. So first, we are determining that that's the reason that we'll need to go into an executive session. We have to do it in two motions now. So is there a motion that says that we're, these two things would affect premature knowledge, cause premature knowledge that could cause harm?
Is that a motion?
I'm asking for one.
Oh, well, it's, it's easier for you to do it right there, Priscilla, because you've got the, you've got the words.
I can, I can say that. Okay. I have to do it in two, two motions to be, okay. First is that we are, have to determine that negotiations the individual matter are proper things to go into executive session for because premature public knowledge would place the board or them at a disadvantage. So can I have a yes or no on that? Megan?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
And then I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss those matters and invite administration.
I'm moved.
Can I have one of that? Megan, do you want to take that motion? Just so moved.
Yeah, I think Jason just said it, but, but yeah, I can say it. So moved.
Jason said so moved, so, okay, how do you vote on that, Megan?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're back in general session. I don't think there's any action to be taken, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Jigs. Everybody? Okay, Megan and Jigs.
Yes.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Night.